Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? And there is no one in the audience, so that can't be. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is motion. All those standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, we don't have any public hearing, sorry. Correct. The applicant has requested a continuous and a 60-day extension of the deadline for the Board to work on the definitive subdivision plan.
And that applicant is Massad Family LLC requesting an approval of a definitive subdivision plan under Section 3.3 and site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for realignment of a portion of 54 Faith Ave. Auburn Mass. to the site of Diamond Oil Group's GM service facility, NAP 61, Parcel 15. This was continued from 6/13/17.
Mr. Chairman, the request was received yesterday in writing to continue the subdivision and the cycling review hearing until our next meeting, tentatively scheduled for the third week of August, being August 21st. And this also includes a request to extend the deadline from which the Board must act by 60 days.
Do you have a signature paper?
I do. I did not bring anything. But I do. All we would need is two votes, regular one to accept a continuous to the 21st, but we also need a...
21st of August.
And we would also need a vote, the motion, and second for accepting the request for a 60-day extension from the date from which the Board must act.
I made a motion that we continue the hearing to August 21st.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Do I have a motion to extend to 60 days, the time period?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a decision? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Next meeting says August 15th, Matt.
I apologize for forgetting my Mondays and Tuesdays. Tuesdays, the 15th, and Mondays, the 3rd.
All right, amend that motion to the 15th of August, 1st of 21st.
I can do that grammatically, it's a script.
Okay.
And we don't have to state the day of the 60 days, it's just one of the 60 days from...
It's an additional 60 days on top of the 90 days from the date of submission, which was April 12th. So now they have 250 days. Which gives us...
What is that?
Teres does anticipate.
Okay, there's two votes. And the discussion, Brimar State subdivision update bond reduction request.
So, Mr. Chairman, if the members like to direct the video, then this time, I was sent me, earlier this, wait, last week?
Late last week, yeah.
After a significant rain event that took place in Auburn, someone sent this video to Mr. Steinover, who should share it with us, and I'll share it with the Board. Representative's significant washout on one of the lots that are under construction. Bill, the road control, silt running down the road.
On the way out, yes.
Bypassing the catch basin, which would be under there somewhere.
That's the one that's right back at the house of Rodriguez, and then going down right through...
Yeah, I believe this is Amherst.
Yep, Amherst, and they're going down that.
So that's going up on the catch basins below it, right?
Yeah, that's all right down on Bryant Cliff, right, in the front lawn.
Yes. So, one of the things I would like to point out, I'm gonna go back. And my closet might be a little blurry. But I can't tell exactly where it is, but I think it's somewhere in here is the catch basin, and they have silt sacks in them.
In front of the guy's joint?
It's maybe just after it, but there's, obviously, it's not doing anything. The silt sacks were hardly even pulled when we looked at the afterwoods, so the water's just bypassing it. And there's another catch basin on the opposite side of the road. Now, we didn't see the silt on the other side, but that's not in play here either. So the way that the slope is, the catch basins aren't even doing what they're supposed to be.
Not quite. Don't they have some that are directional, don't they, John?
No, they require... Mass BO2 requires that you have left hand in right hand, just basis.
It's hard to tell if that's kind of like here, right?
Maybe, who's out there?
And there is another one on the other side, but this is going, splitting right in between them, based on grade or whatnot. So, the town engineer and I, as well as the town engineer Phil Coyle and Joanna Pigman, the civil engineer, and I went up to the site and walked the entire loop up to the back half, just to inspect existing conditions. We found the manhole that they did uncover. Still a hole. You notice a couple of boring's and whatnot that...
How did they identify? How far under the tower was it?
Pretty, pretty far. I mean, that's what, an inch and a half of top code, I think? And it was...
Should be a total of three inches, three inches minimum, maybe.
I think the top standard is two and one and a half or something.
Two and a half, one and a half.
Four inches, I think.
Yep. So, yeah, there was, it's a pretty deep hole. So there's somewhere between 12...
So they had an inch and a half, at least an inch and a half of asphalt over the top of the...
Yes, so there's 12 or 14 more that are out there that they need to uncover as well.
And they're not quite sure where they are.
They haven't identified them or dug them out yet, so until such time, the town engineer's not gonna do a bond...
So they just, they don't have a map or a plan?
Oh, we have them on the plans, it's just they didn't dug them out.
So it's hit or miss, and if they start going over here, now that, all that's gonna be dug up and lousy.
Correct.
Oh, like I said, if we're gonna repave, grind, pulverize, and...
Oh, I know.
Grind, pulverize, repave, and grid, and asphalt.
So what the town engineer and the building commissioner and I discussed was, how can we enforce this in a timely manner? Now, we could've come here today with the town engineer and had the Board make a recommendation for Mr. Gallo to comply with, and we would be able to follow up with that until August 15. So that gives, that stretches us out a month. So we decided instead who's to put it in the, in the building commissioner's hands because the two lots under construction are gonna require sign-offs soon. So he was going to ask them to stabilize the lots prior to issuing any, any closeouts or sign-offs.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So where that's come since then, I didn't get an update, but that would ensure enforcement sooner rather than waiting for the Board to recommendation and then follow up.
What does it take to pull this barn, period?
My question. Well, they still have six more houses to build.
Doesn't matter what you started with, the contract or the development.
There isn't...
I don't think there's a limit on that.
There isn't. If the Board sets a deadline for him to finish, then at that point, you'd have to advertise public hearing, and then we can pull it.
But if he's not complying with the town ordinances and...
With what he's done already.
To do that, I think the town has the right to pull this barn?
We do. We'd have to give him a deadline first to complete the rest of the work, or to do all of the work.
Being before yesterday.
At least formally, in a formidable letter, then you'd be invited to a public hearing and schedule that public hearing with advertising and such. And at that time, if the works said to not be complied, then we can pull that off.
Now, on this barn, we can just pull it. I mean, probably will. And I thought of a word, I'm by someone else. It's not subject to litigation between them.
Uh, it could.
Right. Because I asked a long time ago, I said, can't we have something where it's just all on our side? We want to take it, we take it. They can't litigate. Because then all they'll do is do that, and we'll be sitting in court, and all you're gonna do is go down and do a simple filing, and it can tie up for more. So we gotta get inventive here, somehow. So, or, and it might be somehow related to, you know, sit and think about it, how we can do it with respect to occupancy or whatever we have to do.
Does he have pulling permits for the rest of the lots?
Just two right now. There's still six empty lots.
So those don't even have foundation?
The two that he's done have foundation, and they're framing already. I think they're working on HVAC now and insulation.
So he's hoping probably to have them done real, and sold in the next three months.
I wouldn't give any more building permits, pulling permits, like a permit.
I think the town engineer and the building inspector are working towards something like that. Seeing two houses go up this summer was actually wasn't surprising, in my opinion.
In these roads, you...
Show progress, but...
You look in some of the developments, I was at part of farm the other day, those roads are already starting to go, I mean, they're, you know, it's, they've got to be overseen when they're put in, to make sure that they follow the town standards and stuff like that. A lot of them were just put on, oh, and mix up everything that was dumped there. That, that we had nothing but trouble with. That, that was a long time. We were on it for 10 years, we were actually.
Is there a way that the town could put it into the bylaws that have jobs like this? Because Bill doesn't have the manpower to go out there and inspect it all day long, like it should be done. They have to pay for an independent consultant to inspect that, that the town actually hires, but they pay the bill?
Even if we put it, made an amendment to the bylaws, he's only subject to what the bylaws require.
This guy here, I'm talking about down the road.
Oh, sure, absolutely. That certainly...
Now, because it's always been a problem. It's, you know, and they, they know, like I said to Matt earlier, that there's not a lot of, you know, we don't have the money to keep chasing them, or not, I don't know.
It's just, we're still issuing releases on each project. All of the lots were released when he took over the project. So all the Board still has control over, it's just the work.
Okay. So what trigger do we have for the current violation, which are those manhole covers? Let's deal with that. That should've triggered something.
Some type of violation? It's part of the review and kind of providence of the town engineer. Now, that's the way our, our relationship is.
Conservation commission should be involved, too.
So we thought about that, too.
With silt and...
Well, can we prove the silt actually made it to a what? So we were talking about that, to a what, that area? Or did it get something in the lives of...
Well, if it gets stuck in the catch basins and the piping, then he should be responsible for cleaning all the catch basins from there, as far as that water ran and the pipe.
We thought...
So we had him do that once, didn't, isn't he the one that we had, or was it, it could've been Ravain. We had him had a pump out of all of it. They went into people's cells and everything. But if you go down Bryant Cliff, I mean, Hick Cross, Grimor, it's right by where the bus station is.
Oh, by worse.
There's a little wetlands in that, within, there's a drop down, the triangular section of that bus turnaround. And I believe that's where all the water that comes out of that, it was just, it was a maple swamp right there. That roll in was a maple swamp. And that, because the water might come under there, because then it goes down into the brook that runs down along Jay Street and Richard Street and down through there. So I think it might be open right under there, and then it comes out underneath and goes into a culvert and starts to get piped down through.
But that's the whole thing, then that's what we were talking about, is can we prove?
Get it across Grimor, because Grimor's got a crown.
I don't think we can.
Would you approve that that silt fed, that silt and that water ran, as far as it did, contaminating every catch basin from there to the end? That's not any, that's not a far throw at all.
But nothing between this house and the catch basins within the Buckner Zone or a lot of here? I get what you're saying, and we thought the same thing. It's just, how can we prove that the silt actually went into the catch basin and then carried itself into the water or something?
Well, did any of that silt get into any of the...
The ownership of the proof is on him, not you.
Exactly. And if we issue an enforcement order, how can you prove it when a brain of that's already happened, you know? So Phil Coyle's already, we said the same thing. Can we get enforcement from Concom to just shut this down now?
That's why I think you gotta deal with what we have, just manhole covers and the runoff. Those two actions alone, is there anything that is in our powers to make a decision on, or do we have to wait for the town engineer and council?
We can, in theory, we could request that he meets a certain degree of compromise by a certain date. So if we wanted to have all of them uncovered by November 15th, we can, we can set that, or whatever the date is, we just pick a date.
All we really have control over at this point is that barn.
It's just the work on the barn, yes.
Well, you have control over the building permits, you can give a cease and desist order if he complies.
The building commissioner could.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So that's why we felt it was better to go with him, because that's where, that's where he's making his, his work.
That's where he's trying to make his money, so we start building.
If you look at the end of Brad's law, is there any of the storm, just look to see if it got down that far, and if there's any catch basins where it would go in and then underground into that low spot I told you in that triangle section, which then feeds the brook. Then it would be all in that brook, all the way down to the end of...
Right.
Richard Street to where...
Yeah, and that's...
I don't even know where it comes from.
And we got another heck of a rainstorm today that was...
Absolutely. I was driving in that today.
Wouldn't we need video of that silt though, in the wetland?
Like, in the light of... How do you prove it? So that's, that's the big thing. And if it got into the catch basins, it was supposed to, in the corner of this intersection, that would've piqued it all the way to that giant detention basin that Ravain had to build in the back of Framwell Lots here, I don't know, proper, just driving. That channels all the way there, and it would've treated it properly. But what you're saying is, if it went down the assisting storm system all the way across the Richard Street, et cetera, how can we prove it? And that was why we didn't go towards conservation as our first option. So let's, we felt building department was, was the right news.
Well, at least you're sitting talking about it, because I think you need to.
Absolutely.
Because it's just gone on too long. I mean, and it takes his time, all the department heads and the people in the town's time, and our time talking about it, and we could be doing something else. And it's just the developer that just, you know, they try to walk away like it was nothing, no problem, they're not afraid of us not, there's no, there's like no penalty for being bad.
That's why I like going after the requirement of doing manhole covers sooner, because I'd rather, it seems to me, I'd rather him be spending his money fixing those, not having us take it over, than going against the bond to fix those. The more money he fixes himself preserves the value of that bond for other issues that we know are there that could be much more, much worse than this. So I think we need to have a date out there for something. I think it's too easy to keep saying, well, it's the worst we can do, we gotta go after the smallest little thing we have to, at least put a date on the books to get him to focus on this, because I don't want to build a houses if they're gonna look like this, I'd rather you fix the road right now. That's infrastructure.
Sure.
And we want the infrastructure over those lots. I mean, you gotta repair the, obviously, the runoff up there and fix that. But I think on those two things, we just gotta put something in front of them, because sadly, we know there's a high probability he's gonna violate that, too. And that creates another trigger for us. We gotta put triggers in there. Without these triggers, everything skips another month ahead of time. I think that's, that's, that's the way I...
Kicking it down the road.
Even if it's small, even if it's small, doesn't seem like a lot, I think we, in my opinion, I think we should have a date for something, so at least money's gonna come out of his pocket in time to do this today. He's experiencing pain to get his attention drawn to this matter, because at work, the way I see it is where this entire project, we've probably enabled him by not effectively dropping the hammer at every little thing. You know, because we try to be reasonable, I would imagine, and you don't want to kill every project. I mean, it is construction, you're gonna run into issues now and again, you are gonna get a crazy storm now and again, I mean, we still should've dealt with that, but I think we've always let too much, and we've enabled him to a degree, and I think we've got, he has to know what the rules are.
So I definitely share that sentiment. I'm not a fan of waiting any longer than the next person, either. I mean, it's been under construction since 1966, when Kamalsi first got it approved, so...
They didn't continue it then because of the water in the hill.
And, you know, one of the other things that I, I don't have video of yet, but I happened to be up in that neighborhood for the 4th of July, and it's a swamp up at the top of that hill. And there must've been probably several thousand frogs.
I saw a bunch of them up there, too.
In the top?
All over the lawns.
On the western side?
All over, I mean, it's a swamp up there.
That's a little bit of a...
I'm not telling you, it was unbelievable, I could not believe it.
It was a plague?
You couldn't walk. So you were stepping on frogs.
When we were kids and we had a camp up there, the water just came out of a hole and ran like a brook, because we used to look and say, where is it coming from? It didn't come up the hill on the other side and then go back down, and it was just always, almost all year, and a stream running, so it's just loaded with water.
And I'm telling you, you could not walk across the lawn without stepping on frogs.
If they oppose building permits, give a cease and desist, and then give to the builder, that's how we're gonna get the road completely done properly, and I mean, pulverize it. Put your binder course down, put your curving in, raise your manholes and catch basins to finish grade, and then pave the final paving, and then he can continue, till then yank everything, because he can't.
So if, if we got him to do all that, bottom for the end of the year, he still has six more houses to build, and we wouldn't accept the road until the subdivision's finished?
Correct.
So then he'd be destroying our road with construction equipment, and then we'd end at, once all six houses are done, at the rate he's going, that would be three years from now, then we'd need him to do more road repairs, and so...
Is there a way we can use the barn that we need and expand it?
I don't think, I don't think we should use any of the bond money that exists now for...
You should try to, as he says, we want him to do it, so we keep that barn for other things.
Then you oppose building permits, give him a cease and desist, tell him he's gonna raise everything to grade now, so the catch basins work, and when he, when and if we decide to let him continue with the six more houses, at the end of that, he has to pulverize the road and pave it properly. So it's all seamless, so we don't have the measles up there, patch here to patch there, because if we take it over, the town takes it over, within five years, you're gonna have potholes up there or less.
I think, and I'm not, I'm not the biggest fan of waiting either, but it, you probably wanted for the town engineer, the building commissioner to be here to answer any progress questions that they...
Yeah, we, if you could ask them to come, you know, whatever, so we can just go through with them.
Right, that's, that's the, that's the difference. So even if we write a recommendation letter, the next time we hear an answer to that recommendation would be that note anyways.
But we need to start somewhere, so if you could get them so we can all talk it through and see what, and they can answer all the questions that I may have, or any of us have.
Right.
And then say, oh, we wouldn't want to do it just like you just said, because then we'd be driving the equipment on the brand-new road, and if anything else went wrong, we don't have any barn, and what can we do here? Can we force him in court to just do it on his own? We got free legal, we got a judge there, we can go in.
My, my vote is still do something.
Absolutely.
I think you have to at least do the manholes, because whatever the town says isn't gonna change my opinion that he's covered manholes. You know, so as far to the extent of, do you want to pulverize a hole, then today, absolutely, I agree with you. Let's get a plan, but let's at least put something small that he can hopefully do in the meantime, it's gonna get him back to this meeting and give us another trigger point. And again, like I said, unfortunately, we have history now, and he's probably gonna violate that as well, but it gives us more trigger points. Without these covenants and triggers in there, we have no teeth. So I'd give him something small that we know we have to do, you know, raise, if it's raising the drainage, because we only have to fix that, finding the manholes, that's it. We got 60 days to do that, and then we can still have a meeting, because I think we have to, we have to show we're taking this seriously, I think, for the town and those residents.
With the engineer and...
And with pulling the barn and everything else, anything can be litigated, the fax control, and he covered the manholes.
Yeah. So let's take that one.
Let's address it.
It still allows us to do other things, as we talked about, the town, at least get a deadline for something.
Building permits.
You also paved the road around the pool.
irt occupancy, yeah, yeah.
Now, John, they, they should be able to, even three inches under, they should be able to detect them with that, it's a something, metal detector, and almost find...
You don't have to take a bullpoint, try to find them with a jackhammer, take a metal detector.
You don't need a PhD for that?
No.
It looks like a wig.
Yeah, pretty hard digging.
Yeah, I think that's a machinico.
Oh, nice, nice.
It looks like they tried finding manhole without...
They were the bullboy.
It was just holes.
Yeah.
And that explains a lot. I don't know that's...
No, it was laid out properly, his surveyor should've had a baseline, he should've been able to find every one of those if he'd asked, built it as they would.
Almost drawn a circle on the top.
So Matt, how would you suggest I make the motion for this, to do the manhole covers and catch basins within 60 days?
Just like that, actually, just like that. Yeah, send a letter to, to developer, heckling that stuff.
I would make the motion to send a letter to the developer requiring to uncover the manhole covers and raise the catch basins within 60 days. Anything else you add to that?
I'd make it 30 days.
Well, I mean, I...
That's not unreasonable.
No, you don't think so?
No, because if you got a manhole crew in there, they can do 50 covers a day.
We got the expert. I, I yield to your opinion on that, I think that, I also don't want to be, again, he's ridiculous, but if you give us totally building, doing 30 days, I don't think...
We're doing 30 days.
With a response in 10 days, I want a response, where they acknowledge it, and they're like, face it. Do you intend to provide a report to this Board for your next meeting?
He has 15 covers, right?
Yeah.
There's 21 working days in a month, that's less than one cover per day, working days.
Yeah.
It's more than doable.
No, when you say it like that.
So we coupled Scott's and Jason's...
To the motion?
Motion of response within 10 days after we see. And we don't have more to think. Any discussion, or your opinion?
I'm gonna amend that to 30 days versus 60.
Oh, yeah, amend it to, fully completed within 30 days of receiving the letter.
Well, we didn't, you, we didn't do the second one.
I'll second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a developer requiring 30 days to uncover manholes and raise catch basins. I'll word this differently, but also...
Make sure they pave around these, all the ways in the grade that are paved.
All right. And you can manhole covers, yeah.
Provide a report and all those to the Board for the next meeting.
We also want to talk about street lighting and the landscape plan we do. Associate member vacancy.
Yes, we still have the associate member vacancies, too. And the in all interested parties, looking to apply.
August meeting schedule?
We kind of alluded to it already, but, yeah, instead of meeting on the 8th and the 22nd, we'll have one meeting in August, that being the 15th. With the, what we'd like to make that as a motion.
I'll make a motion to have it expedited August 15th.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote. The meeting, August 15th. Anything else, Matt?
There are three sets of minutes. I brought the table from our lesson, and that is the April 25th set. All members are present for that meeting. No questions.
John? Andy? Jason? Um, from I. Do you have a motion to accept?
Make the motion accept it June 13th.
I thought we were April 25th.
It's April 25th.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote. We have the meetings at June 13th.
Do you have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 13?
I'll second.
Any questions? Jason, John, remember, Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
The June 27th.
The June 27th is just one small correction, so Mr. Steinover read the motion.
Yeah.
So...
We're not that, huh?
No, not today, not jumping fluid. And that would make the one for the accept the meeting minutes for that one. And that would make them want to do accept the meeting minutes without the correction?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That is all the information I have for the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions to adjourn?
Second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.